Perfect. All right, I'm actually gonna hop out for a second just to be sure. Okay, so we're filling in here. I know Teresa was planning on joining, so I'll give it one more minute for her and then we'll just get started. Okay, and Sean, is it also possible to record this as well?
It's both on YouTube and it's being recorded.
Okay, never mind. Don't want to complicate things too much. That's great.
No, it is. It is being recorded.
Through Zoom as well?
Yes, yes.
Okay, perfect. Alrighty, well, we'll get started. Teresa joins, then we can let her in. I know everybody is, first of all, I want to thank everybody for joining. Just to give you a little bit of an idea of what we're going to do, and then we'll jump into it, just to give a sense of what some of the, I don't want to call them ground rules, that probably sounds a little bit too strict, but just what the expectations are going to be for how this will run. I want to give a short presentation, just to give everyone kind of the baseline of facts of what the numbers are, how they compare to last year, specifically, you know, what the what some of the new positions are, things like that, and a bit of an overview of the board and the district's reasoning for why we came to this point. And then we can open up the floor to questions. There's, I guess there's two ways that you can interact with questions. Number one, you can just raise your hand in the Zoom feature, and we'll let you into the panel. We've done this for our forums in the past. So we would just let you on, you could ask your question live, and we would respond. And then we, once that we've come to some conclusion there, then we kind of shift you back into the attendees. And next person that has a question, we know, just rinse and repeat. The other way, if you're a little camera shy, you know, you could submit a question through the chat. I will say though, you know, we want to be sure that if the chat is being inundated, then we're not going to be able to answer every question. So I think the surefire way of getting your question answered would be to raise your hand. Assuming that there will be people that want to ask the questions directly, we are going to give some deference to that. Just because it's a more orderly way of doing it than responding to everybody that's firing questions at us. But, you know, feel, do what feels comfortable for you, and we'll get to as many questions as we can. Okay, so I will, and also when I'm done with this, with this presentation, I'm going to share the link in the chat, so that as we're going through our questions, you can go back and refer to everything that I'm going to share with you here. We're trying to, if you've ever been to one of the forums that we've conducted in person, you know, we always have information for the, any attendee. So we want to kind of recreate that experience as much as we can here on Zoom. All right, so from the top. The, first, just to get the, you know, the primary numbers out of the way. So the proposed budget is seventy-six million, six thirty-six, two eighty-five. In pure dollar numbers, that is a shade over $2 million increase from last year, so that's a 2.81% increase. That's not the increase to the tax levy though, which is an important point. So the projected tax levy is just a shade under $51 million. So that's in a tax levy increase of eight-hundred-ninety-five thousand nine hundred. So that's coming in at 1.79. Our tax cap this year is 2.74. So we're about a full percentage point under the tax cap. The projected use of fund balance for this year is $2,250,000. So, you know, just to, I know that some have been confused about the difference between the budget-to-budget increase and the tax levy increase. And we'll get to some of the specifics in a second, but the reason that in this case, the budget-to-budget increase is higher than the tax levy increase, that difference is being offset by state aid. So that's why we're able to do more with the money than the 1.79 would suggest. Now, you may ask, all right, well, where does this money actually go? So the breakdown is similar proportionally, it's identical to the budget that we're currently operating under for 2020, 2021. So 77% of that is programs. Whenever you see programs, you're really thinking teachers, salaries, anything that is required to operate our academic programs and sports, music, all that stuff. This is very typical for any school district budget. The programs, teacher salaries, pensions, benefits, et cetera, will always be around 80%. Then the administration, similar makeup that of the, of the programmatic budget. We're talking salaries, benefits, pensions, things like that. So that's total 86%. And, you know, those are, for the most part, contractually obligated from, you know, previous agreements. So you don't typically have much wiggle room in that 86% chunk. And then capital is, I know capital may imply that those are like improvements, but it's actually just all of the money that is used to keep the buildings running, you know, so custodians, the constant maintenance and repair that has to be done to these buildings. And again, they the proportion is the same generally year to year. This year, it happens to be exactly where we were last year. Okay, now, when we talk about the increases, you know, what are the new items that are being added this year? So going down the list, that's a full-time computer teaching assistant at Willow Avenue and Cornwallon Hudson Elementary, a reading support teacher at the middle school, technology integration specialist at the middle school. This is particularly important as technology is becoming a more critical part, central part of our curriculum, not only in this district, but nationwide, a social studies teacher at the high school. A point six, I know this is like getting into the weeds of how education positions are, the education position nomenclature, but not quite a full-time position, a physical education teacher. And then a, we have a couple of athletic positions that were, these have been requested frankly for a while. And this was the year that we felt that there was some room to do this. So the assistant varsity volleyball coach, modified boys and girls lacrosse, which this is something that has been requested for years, even before I was on the board, varsity girls golf team, similar. And then we get down to our custodial workers. You'll see the custodial workers, middle school, high school, but then also a painter. So the painter is a position that is part of our, and this is through Walter Moran, our head of buildings and grounds. You know, he has been coming to us for a couple of years, making presentations to us about the amount of work that is done throughout the year from buildings and grounds, and it is an enormous amount of work. And that team is, by Walter's admission, has been stretched thin at times because of the, just the sheer volume of work that it takes to keep these buildings, which we all know are showing signs of age in operating condition. So the painter is going to have more than enough work to do, and this is the kind of work that we would normally contract out for, but having somebody on staff is a play at saving money over time. And then a full-time music strings teacher, this will be available district-wide. And this is an item, again, that has been was playing in a central role in our arts, you know, one of the things that Terry Dade, our superintendent, has always talked about is the three As, athletics, academics, and arts. We want to be sure if we are supporting in one, we're able to support in all. And the music strings teacher is part of that. And then that final line, the transfer to capital, the middle school library and the middle school auxiliary gym floor. So those are two of the three projects that we're doing this year. The third project is a, the high school cooling tower. The reason that that's not in here is because that's already being funded out of the capital reserve fund. So it's not listed. You know, that's something that we've been frankly saving for, for a number of years. So that's the way it's not on this list in particular, but I know that there's been suggestions, and rightfully so, that the district should be planning ahead for these kinds of things. This, the cooling tower at the high school is an example of the district doing just that, saving money over time. And now enough is piled up in the capital reserve fund that we are able to pay for that out of that. Okay. Now, this is, I I want to preview like slides like this. I co-opted Harvey Sotlin's presentation from the other night, so I'm not going to pretend to be as well-versed in the numbers as Harvey is, but the one number from here that I think is relevant to look at is the increase in state aid, which is this column over here in the, I don't know if you can see my mouse or not, but the three, we're talking about an increase in state aid of about 3.4 million. State aid normally goes up year to year, foundation aid, the formula for foundation aid, foundation aid is the state education term for basically the, the foundation, the bedrock of funding that each district gets. And it doesn't go down per year, it goes up. And the hope is that you get enough increase in foundation aid from year to year to cover some of your natural rises and things like healthcare costs and salaries and whatnot. It doesn't always work out that way. This year, we ended up getting a significant more amount in foundation aid, about $2.5 million more than what we would have expected. So while you see this increase here is 3.4, I think that the part of that is kind of baked into what you expect. That typically goes up from one year to the next in foundation aid, but this year we experienced a significant increase in that, which we'll discuss a little bit more later, which has allowed us to take on some of the pent-up or address some of the pent-up needs on both the capital and academic side that we itemized just in the previous frame. Okay, now, as far as what does this actually mean to the tax levy? So if your home is $250,000 fair market value, that's a $9 tax increase a month. And then on down the line, 350, that's 13, 450, $16 a month. And then for the tax levy history, this is always good for perspective. So again, we're at 179 this year. The seven-year average is 197, so we're coming in, we're helping to bring down the average actually of the tax increase. Last year was 138. And then you can read it for yourself all the way across the board, but you know, we're certainly on average, actually less of a tax levy increase this year than in the recent history. One helpful thing that I think is for, I know myself, certainly before I was on a school board, and I know for, for others, is this understanding like, well, how does 1.79 compare to surrounding districts? So I put together a little chart here that two criteria, one are who is geographically very close to us, and also for those districts that are slightly further out, who is demographically very close to us, or at least close in just the size of their district, as just to try to find some useful comparisons. So Central Valley, very close neighbor, is proposing a 2.86% tax levy increase this year, Washingtonville, 2.5%, Minnesick, which has very similar in size to 2.42. Ardsley, I know that I wanted to have one Westchester district in there, Ardsley, actually, their, their operating budget is almost identical to ours. They hover right around 75 million as well. So they're a useful comparison as far as size, scale. They are doing a 2.32. Cornwall here, again, 1.79. Monroe Woodbury is right in the same neighborhood, a little lower, at 1.5. And, you know, it's obviously not, wouldn't be, wouldn't be fair if we didn't mention those that are going at 0% this year, Goshen and Warwick. But I just want to also add a little context to Goshen and Warwick as well. Goshen increased their tax levy last year by 3.52%. So while, yes, they are at a 0%, keeping it flat this year. When you take it for the last two years, our increases are actually lower. And not only were they at three, and I also, I don't want to sound like I'm critiquing Goshen, but I just want to, my, my point of this is sometimes you see a number and the number on its own doesn't tell the full story. Goshen is not, sorry?
Could I just jump in here for just a second? Your top one, Central Valley, should be Valley Central?
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you for live.
Someone else pointed that out, but it is Valley Central.
Got it.
What they're doing, so, yeah, thank you.
Okay. I can, I can vouch for the numbers, but I guess the rest of the typos. No, in the interest of accuracy, thank you. But yeah, back to Goshen. So, you know, you can see a number like 0% and think, wow, Goshen's got it all figured out. But last year, they not only did they increase taxes 3.52%, they actually, this was, you know, the height of COVID and state aid numbers were coming in under, lower than expected. They actually cut a significant amount out of their operating budget in order to, to meet these shortfalls. So they had to cut staff and increase the tax levy by 3.52%. Last year, we did not cut any staff, and we only increased by 1.38%. And actually, we added a, our director of technology position, which has turned out to be incredibly essential, you know, this year. So sometimes the single number doesn't tell the full story. It may seem as though if a district is doing a 0% increase, that, that's the model to follow, but you pan out and, you know, we, the story is a little different when you take into account the two years. Warwick, not quite as drastic as Goshen, but last year they raised their tax levy by 2.6 again compared to ours at 1.38. And just as a reminder there, CCSD has had the lowest cost per pupil in 12 of the last 13 years. So the money is certainly relative to, and it's lowest cost for people in Orange County. In the 12 last 13 years, so relatively speaking to our surrounding districts, the money has been spent efficiently. So that's just to give you a kind of an overview of like what the logic behind some of these decisions were. And this has been written about and spoken about in other places, but just so, you know, it's all on the table here. With our increase in state aid, we had an opportunity to address both key academic needs and make critical repairs to our facilities, all with a moderate increase to our local taxes, as illustrated in the previous slide. The academic positions were identified two years ago, but had to be put on hold because of the economic impact of COVID. The three facility projects, so the cooling tower, the two floors at the middle school, were all on the bonds that were voted down two years ago, are nearing critical failure and would cause significant disruption to instruction. I've had some people ask me why these three projects? And if you think about the, we're trying to think of projects that are closest to, to failure and would affect the most students. And those, under those two criteria, those three projects rose to the top. And then finally, the custodial and facility positions bring more work in-house, so the district can rely less on outside contractors with the goal of saving money over time. Now, I just want to preempt some question, not even preempt questions, but really just address questions that I've seen come up in the conversation around town over the last couple of weeks. So is this two-point, roughly $2.5 million increase in state aid a one-time deal? This, I love this question because I asked it myself a couple of weeks ago, which is, it gets to the heart of concern for people. Why add positions if this is a one-year increase when, you know, we're going to be caught holding the bag next year and not have the funding to back it up? But fortunately, it's not a one-time deal. I mentioned that phrase, foundation aid earlier. These funding increases are part of our foundation aid. So now this becomes the new funding floor going into next year. Just for context, foundation aid was introduced as a formula in 2006. Ever since, the foundation, foundation aid has never gone down from one year to the next. Programs and staff funded with this aid will be fully funded in the future. That always comes with the caveat of unless we hit, you know, a Great Depression or something, you know, there are no guarantees. But based on our, we have gone through a significant recession during the time of the foundation aid formula, and it never went down. So as far as these kinds of funding decisions go, it's about a sure bet in education funding in New York State as you can get. Second common question I've heard, why not apply for state aid for these capital projects instead of paying for them in the budget? So this is a bit of a mechanism of how state aid works. So the district actually will be receiving state aid on all three projects in the budget at a reimbursement rate of approximately 75%. However, the district will be getting reimbursed over the next 15 years. So requiring the district to pay the full cost upfront. So you don't get a check, you know, if it's a million-dollar project at 75% aid, state does not give you a check for $750,000 before you break ground. You need to put out the full money, and then it more or less trickles in over the ensuing 15 years. So the good news is, this is a project that we can afford to put the money upfront on, but that will still be getting money back over the next 15 years in the future. Final common question there, why isn't there any money in the budget to address potential gaps in education caused by COVID-19? This is one of the great silver linings of this year, at the end of what has been a very tough year. You know, we've had some, some extra funding come in. So in an increase, in addition to the increase in state aid, the district has been allocated roughly $5 million in federal aid, part of which will be used to address those needs. There, the district is still working through, working with the relevant authorities to figure out exactly how we are allowed to use that money. Because, you know, like with anything that is given to a school district, there are certain requirements that must be met. So we are still in the process of figuring that out, you know, exactly how that 5 million will break down. But it certainly is the plan for, of the, to both the district and the board to use that money to address any potential gaps that there are. Okay, so, and just a final reminder that the vote is Tuesday, May 18th, at the middle school gym, polls open 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM. So to ensure that I see anybody that's raising their hand, I take myself off screen share. Well, open it up for questions. I'm assuming this is the question about Valley Central, yeah, thank you for now, now I feel like I've got egg on my face, but all good. All right, so yeah, open up to anybody who has questions. Let me, as promised in our opening, I'm going to share the, the presentation that I just went through, so that everybody has the same information in front of them and go through it at their own pace.
It's Brendan. I'm sorry, is it okay if I just add a little bit of something?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, yeah.
What the, the program component, which is 77% of the budget, definitely is salaries. We are in, you know, we're in a service industry, all schools are. But it also includes, because it's program, it also includes all materials, supplies, BOCs, it includes transportation, health services, it really, it's the bulk of what goes on in a building. So I just, it's, it's more than salaries, yes, salaries is a big, definitely a big part of it, but it's also all those materials that our children use every day in the classroom. So it's, it's a little bit broader than, than just salary. So I want everybody to understand that as well.
Thank you, Nancy. Good clarification. I know it's, it's always hard to be the first one to, to raise your hand in in any setting. Like I said, if you're comfortable submitting questions through the chat, we'll certainly, you know, take a first come, first serve that way, or raising your hand through the Zoom function and we'll let you in as a panelist.
So I'm going to add something else again, and you can stop me if someone is, is trying to ask a question, Brendan, okay? So as far as, I know people have had questions about the floors in the middle school, the auxiliary gym and the library. There is some asbestos in them, and so that's why they need to be, they need to be taken care of and properly and soon. So obviously not when the children are in the building, but that has to be, has to be done. And so that's why at this point, that project has risen to the top for priority. And so the chiller at the high school is, is already past its life expectancy. Our Walter, our head of buildings and grounds, has done a tremendous job of extending the life through service and, and just general maintenance and upkeep, but it's definitely at the point where if that goes, there's absolutely no air conditioning at the high school at all. And so that building, that's a vital thing that has to be there. So that's why that has to also, that has risen to the very top of, of a high priority, because we cannot wait until that absolutely goes, and it's, it's getting to the point where it really is at the end of its lights.
Yeah, and Nancy, to add on to that, and again, if anybody wants to ask a question, feel free to raise your hand and we'll stop and take your questions. But just to add, you know, a little bit more context to that, I, I've had people say, well, why, you know, part of this, why these three projects discussion? And I've explained that, you know, they meet the criteria for what makes them the most critical, that they're, they're closest to failure or at failure, and they affect the most kids. And, but there's also like another way, I think of thinking about this, if there are other projects that you wanted to address, you know, you've got to get the most critical ones out of the way before you can start considering the ones that are behind them. So that's part of the process that we're going through now. Okay, so first question, Victoria has asked, is there any money in the budget for extra after-school tutoring next year? I know numerous kids failing this year because of COVID circumstances and virtual learning. So to that point, I mean, that's kind of what I was getting at at the, the end there, that, that 5 million that we're getting from federal will, one of the goals is to use it to address needs like that. Again, there's, we're still a couple of weeks out from having full clarity on exactly how we can use that money. But it is our understanding that we will be able to use it to address some of those needs. So while it's not in the budget itself, it's certainly in the plans for next year, and we plan to have the funding for it.
Right, and to Brendan's point, you know, we've been, we've been pushing on that, but we haven't gotten full clarity on the, from the authorities yet on that money. So our hope is to be able to use it for those types of needs next year, particularly on the heels of everything that happened this past year with students in terms of, you know, tutoring or mental health issues, whatever, but we still need to get more definition around how we are allowed to use those funds.
Right. Okay, another question from Janine, is the full-time computer teaching assistant in addition to the one now shared by Cornwallon Hudson and Willow Avenue? I don't know, Nancy, if you have an idea of the specifics on that, we could call in one of our, our district phone of friends if, if needed.
I do believe that that's, that is in addition to what we currently have, because there's certainly a need to expand those services at those schools.
Terry, Terry just responded, yes, it is in addition to, thank you, Terry. I was going to say, Terry, it may be easier to the phone than the phone a friend, but thank you. Okay, I have one hand raised from from Rana Liebert, and I'm just going to allow her into the, the room. Hey, Rana, can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you, Brendan, but
Oh, it's you. Perfect. I figured that out very quickly. Okay.
Intentionally being deceptive, but um, yeah, yeah, so two, just points of clarification questions and one point of praise. First of all, thanks for the clear presentation that it actually does really help clear up a lot of the questions that I had to and at the, the response to the question at the BOE meeting was helpful too. So two points of clarification, the drawing down on the reserve fund, I wanted to ask just about that. I noticed that for the first time in this presentation, I'm sure you've mentioned it before. But how do you think about using that reserve fund? And, you know, like, why did you guys decide to draw down on it this year when we had money coming in? The second question, just to clarify, is the, the $5 million in federal aid. I get the sense from, I think it was John Edelen's response at the BOE meeting, that that was kind of earmarked primarily for capital stuff. I'm getting the sense now that it's, we're not totally sure yet, but it'll probably be like COVID mitigation, which is also a very worthy way to use it. But I'm just curious, like, right now, where we're at in terms of thinking about how we're going to use that and what real capital projects play in that.
Yeah.
Clarifying the 75% reimbursement over 15 years, that was super helpful. I wasn't sure about that, and I just really appreciated that. You know, this is my personal opinion, but I think the more the board can do of that, like giving gifts to 15 years of future boards, that's just awesome. So, yeah, so I was glad to hear that you talked about that point tonight. Thanks.
Brendan, on the, the 5 million for, for COVID relief and that will be anticipated, again, like we said, we haven't gotten clear, and any of you just definitely jump in if I, if I have this wrong, but we have not gotten clear guidance yet as to what it can be used for. There is a possibility that some of it might be able to go for capital. Um, we certainly want it to help the students directly, we know that. So we have to wait for that clear guidance and the specifics that will really lay out what's allowed and what's not allowed. But we're certainly open to any possibility.
And to, to follow up on that, and you, just to give you some, some context as to the complications here, it's actually, it's not 5 million flat from the federal government. I wish it was as simple as that. It's actually from two, two different stimulus programs, coronavirus response and relief supplemental appropriations, helpfully abbreviated CERSA, and the American Rescue Plan. It's about half and half, two, roughly two and a half million each. And so they'll each come with their own different specifications. So, but nothing has been, there's certainly nothing from the government so far that says it's only for capital, and it has not been you know, set aside within the district as as only for capital. We would like to, you know, address several needs, but again, we're still waiting, as Nancy said, to see, and Nina said, to see what the specifics on that would be. Now to the second. I'm sorry, here's Terry responding. We plan to present the board and community further information about the federal funds on May twenty fourth, which is our next scheduled meeting, anticipating guidance from the federal and then state government. So stay tuned at our next meeting for for more clarity on that. I know that Harvey told me earlier, he was actually in a a meeting just today with with them, trying to figure out exactly, you know, what the specifics are. Now, to Hugh's first point about the reserve fund, the logic behind the reserve fund and its usage this year, I would refer to Harvey. I don't know if Harvey, you would like to submit a response directly, or if you would be so kind as even to step in, I don't want to put you on the spot. But I'll give you a second to to decide how you would like to enter the game show. I'm going to assume Harvey is there he is. Okay, he was looking for his Okay, Harvey, you can hear me.
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
It's working. Great. Yeah, okay.
Okay, so specific to the reserve fund. In actuality, what we're using for both the two floors as well as the chiller is what's known as transfer to capital. Every year in the budget, we have a transfer to capital line, and the intent of that line is to take care of what we've deemed to be small necessary projects. Those that we can handle through the budget approval and not necessarily have to go out with a separate vote and a separate bond. Each year, for quite some time, we've been using about three hundred, we've been allocating about three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. So the the list that you saw earlier in Brendan's presentation where it indicated just the two floors, those two floors at the middle school are what we have been able to include in the budget this year because of the additional aid. Okay, so that's strictly attributable to the additional aid that we received, the foundation aid. Specific to the chiller, the chiller is part of the rollover budget, that three hundred and fifty five that we are also budgeting for. As well as in past years, when we've used this three hundred and fifty five, going back many years, we haven't always, you know, tapped out exactly three fifty five. Cost estimates or projections, and you know, we've been fortunate, we've been able to get good bid prices. So we have money that's theoretically left over. So that money's been accumulating. So between the three fifty five that we're out that we're using in the rollover budget and what's left over from past years, that is how we're going to be paying for the chiller.
Harvey, his his other question was, why, why is the, and Hugh, correct me if I'm wrong on this one. Why is the, why have we drawn down on the reserve fund down? And in your notes you gave us, we reduce the district to sign fund balance down to a more realistic and sustainable level of two million, two hundred and fifty thousand. So that was Hugh's question is why, why have we reduced that down?
Okay, I I would ask for some clarity. I think what he was asking about is the capital reserve fund. Why are we drawing down? Maybe we can get some clarity on that piece.
And Hugh, I'm trying to, okay, there you go.
Sorry, I, yeah, I'm probably a little confused, so forgive me if I if I don't get it totally right, but yeah, I, so the, it was referring to a slide that Brendan showed and the balance on the fund before this year was four and a half million or something in that ballpark. And we're taking something in the ballpark of two point two to two point five, I forget precisely. But so that might be the capital reserve fund. If so, I think I understand where that comes from, but it doesn't seem, I mean, well, you guys ask this as a question. Is it, is that the like the bits and pieces of the three fifty five that we put away for capital every year that generated four and a half million? Or did that come from somewhere else?
Okay, let me, let me bring some clarity to this. A bunch of the things that you just mentioned are really actually separate and distinct items. The, we are appropriating or signing fund balance of two point two five million this year. During the current year, this current year that we're in right now, we use four point one million. So we're bringing it down. Why are we bringing it down? We have, we have for quite some time, up until last year, been appropriating about two point four million. The reason that we jumped up to four point one last year had a lot to do with COVID and the board's decision to keep the tax levy as low as possible. Okay, so we pulled even more from the reserves and not the reserves, I'm sorry, we pulled even more from the from the fund balance. What's important to keep in mind is that you you can't, you can't sustain that level forever, because that four point one is an amount that makes the the budget balance. The the money that we use to make that money, that to make that balance actually comes from the surplus that we have every year. And I say every year because we've been fortunate enough that we do have a surplus and we cannot sustain a surplus or expect to have a surplus of four point one million dollars. That would be a very unwise assumption and planning tool. What you really want to do is you want to get it down to a more sustainable and predictable amount. And that's why we're getting it down to, right now, we're down to two point two five. I would like to see it down even further. Again, the the reason we have these surpluses that we can put back into the budget and bring down the levy is because when we do the budget, as I mentioned during the presentations, we budget very conservatively. And if that dark cloud is not over the district every single day, we will in fact have a surplus.
Thank you, Harvey. That was incredibly helpful. I'm just one last question. I'll shut up, and I'm sorry for asking so much. What is the normal surplus in like an annual budget normally?
The annual surplus that we've been, we've been experiencing is is somewhere around three million dollars.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you, Harvey. And thank you, Hugh, for for those questions and those follows, follow, follow ups or follows up. Yeah, well, all right. Harvey still has his hand up. I'm assuming he doesn't. That's just staying up. All right, so we have some some chat questions to get through. So is there, is there going to be pre K program? Senator Scoofus said funds were available. So this was Mr. Dade addressed this at our last meeting just this past Monday. So we have enough funding for roughly sixty seats. We don't have the space for sixty seats though. So what, what's a good part of the, I guess the, I'll probably mislabel it a bill, but the dispensation from the state is that we can contract outside vendors, you know, I think, you know, local, local schools that may have extra space, things like that. So we're actually in the process of interviewing and, you know, researching, let's say, potentially suitable candidates to host those extra sixty seats. So there will be continuing updates on that throughout the spring and into the summer, even if it's not ready. If we can't exactly get everything ready for September, we could still opt into the program midway through the year in January. But certainly, our our goal is to to do this as quickly as, you know, we could possibly get through whatever, you know, red tape comes along the way. Hopefully, that answers your question. Next, people talk about grant, sorry, Nina, go ahead.
I was just gonna say, I think when Terry talked about that the other night, obviously with sixty seats, there's some concern about how that happens. And I think he had said other districts have approached this through a lottery system, but that still has to be worked out as well.
Yes. But great question. It's, I know that, you know, sometimes with questions with things that aren't on the budget are relevant, because you want to know, hey, I didn't see this thing in the budget. Does that mean it's not being considered at all? But that, so that is a great question for that reason, just because it's not itemized in the budget does not mean it's not on the districts in the district's view for next year, we're actively working towards, you know, researching that and making that happen. Okay, so next question, people talk about grants a lot. Can you explain why Cornwall isn't a good candidate for them? So, yeah, I I get this. I I'm sure a lot of people have heard this also, you know, why don't we get something funded through grants? And I've spent a few long weekends myself looking at different grant websites on on different education websites. And frankly, and Nancy, Nina, you know, feel free to add on disagree, or if Terry or even Harvey want to disagree with this view of it. We, we are just not the we're not the kind of district that normally qualifies for these grants because of our relative income as as a district, your relative wealth, you could say, as a district, we're more in the upper middle class region of the income scale. Most grants are not designed for those kinds of districts. So right off the bat, we'll be, we wouldn't qualify for that. And the 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 amounts of grants are typically not in the, even if we were to qualify for them, they're not in the same that they're not at the same value as far as our needs are, you know, like you, if you, if you need a five million dollar or eight million dollar, whatever it was for that football field, you need that replaced. You're not going to find a grant that is that steep. And even if you were to qualify for it, which again is a huge hill that for the vast majority of grants, we we just, we, it's a criteria we don't meet, unfortunately. Nancy, Nina, I don't know if you wanted to add on to
No, I think that's, I I know, I think the last couple of years, we have had information given to us by by variety of different people, community people, board members, and it comes down to that either they they don't the grants really weren't applicable to to the public schools or on the most part, like Brendan said, we just don't we just don't fit the criteria as spelled out by the grants. The town is in the same position. And I can tell you that, having attended as many town board meetings as I can in Cornwall. It's always interesting to hear what's going on firsthand and and the town does not qualify for a lot also of of grants that are out there. They do get some, but they don't get as many as maybe some other communities can. And it has to do with with the socioeconomic breakdown of the of the community at large. So that's kind of what happens. It doesn't mean that if something, you know, was out there that we would qualify for, it doesn't mean that we wouldn't sit down and get a team together and see what we can do.
Yeah, it's also not to say we don't look. I mean, these, we certainly, I mean, I know I signed up for email updates that I'm still getting for for grants that, you know, you might qualify for, and you look through them and and it's just what Nancy described. I mean, and some of them are actually very specific, because the the grantor, you know, whoever is backing the money can decide whatever criteria really that they want. And sometimes they are for very specific needs that if you don't fit that very specific needs that you're, you're not going to qualify for. So I mean, these, these are unfortunate truths, and certainly we wish that that was different, because that that would open up another funding source, which as a board, as a district, we are constantly looking for. Okay, so that, we're caught up on the yeah, just scrolling through to be sure, but yeah, we're caught up on the the chat questions. So if anybody certainly wants to add another or raise their hand to ask questions directly. We've got fifteen minutes, so we're stuck with the other people.
Brendan, did you, you went over the the email that we got, we all got this morning?
Hugh, Hugh was actually asking, yeah, he wants to ask the follow up.
I'm sorry, I just think probably having a question to answer is better than not having a question to answer.
There you go.
Can I, yeah, so one of the things I asked at last meeting, it was just like what the process is for identifying needs and I I I I think I was taken to imply that this came up like out of the blue last second and you invented it, which wasn't my intent. But I I'm genuinely curious about like how you guys get requests and and my basic understanding of it, but I'm putting this out there as a straw man that you can correct. Is that like principles from the different schools say we need, you know, and give you like a list? And then you have to choose from those lists when you're like determining what positions you're going to fill. Is that basically how it works? Or can you just like illuminate, you know, how how needs kind of get up to your level and then you make the decisions?
Well, it starts, it starts in the fall, fall into into early winter well before January, where the administration that knows what their buildings need, they start meeting with Harvey and Terry and Harvey jump in here at any point in time. But that's how the process begins at the school level. And that's where at the, and that's where it then filters up to us a few months after that, after much has, you know, been gone through, not only with the prince at the principal level, but the director level and then also central admin, and then they, they're sitting for many, many meetings, kind of hashing everything out to see what would, what would be the top priority. Needs that would benefit the kids. Needs I'll go to, you know, definitely from buildings and grounds, the more we add, and we have added skilled workers over the last several years, it certainly we don't have to hire out, because when you hire out, you have to pay prevailing wage, which is incredibly high. So this is a tremendous way for us to save money for the district. But certainly, listening to the needs of the buildings, instructional needs, those sorts of things, that's where it all starts. And then it yes, it does filter up to us. I don't know if I answered that question huge enough, but.
And Harvey's Harvey, I think you can just speak because you're you've been empowered from previously, yeah.
I I just wanted to add a couple of things. There's no one path to our needs. The important thing is that we we become aware of what they are. And what I can tell you is that, you know, it's it's every corner, every stakeholder, it's a grassroots operation. A good example is the lacrosse, the modified lacrosse that you're seeing in the budget. I can tell you that this has been requested at least, I think, for three or four years now, and we have had almost annual meetings where the lacrosse parents and the organizations in town have come into the district office, and we've had lengthy meetings where they have articulated and gone through in great detail. You know, the need, and they've explained why. And this is actually, you know, gone through different leaderships in each of these organizations, the the need still stays constant. So that's a good example, but all stakeholders are involved. It's really an ongoing annual process. If school starts on September first and the need is identified, if we can't meet it, it's going to go on our list and will be, it will be part of the evaluation.
And to be clear, and Harvey, if you can actually stay on, because there's a question that came in through the chat that you may be able to assist with, I think. And just to add, you know, I think that it's what everyone is saying, just to be to be sure, I think, the way I view it anyway, there are many or several funnels that all of these needs go through, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't just become, hey, go around the district and what does everyone want? It certainly, by the time it reaches the board level, it has gone through a funnel at the the building level, it's gone through a funnel at the district level. If that involves Walter over at Buildings and Grounds, so that by the time, and then when when they are presented to us, there's, you know, weeks of cross evaluation, if you will. And then also in the, in the instance of the modified lacrosse, also the strings this year, there's a fair amount of advocacy that goes on at the parent level. And, you know, this is another function of the board being receptive to to all kinds of input. But, you know, it it certainly, it goes through those degrees of funnels along the way. Okay, so I want to catch up on what items are not on the budget that are on the back burner for future projects. If you want to offer a follow up, just to be clear, because when when I see items, you know, it could be facilities, could be academics, and that's where Harvey, I was gonna I know this has come up, but let's view this question through the lens of facility items for a second. I know this is something that we we talked about through budget season, and it's kind of a dizzying question to answer, because there are so many. But if you can just give some clarity, if not the specific items, but just, you know, the thought process that, you know, we go through when deciding what will stay on the back burner for a given year versus what we'll address.
Sure. And actually, this is a good example. This is a good year for an example. Every five years, a school district, every school district must do what's known as a building condition survey. And what it does is it looks at every nook and cranny within the building, every part of the building, every mechanical and passive active system and identifies the the useful life remaining and identifies what needs to be done to bring it up to speed. So this is quite a undertaking. It's it's done through our architects, engineers, and they provide us with a very detailed report. In conjunction with that, we In conjunction with that, we also use that for what's known as a five-year master plan that is currently being finalized. And, you know, it, it goes without saying, you know, it, it, looking back, there were, there were two bond votes for, for critical needs, both of which went down. Um, there's certainly stuff from there as well as new stuff because, you know, the, the, the clock has been ticking. There is no shortage of what we need to do here in terms of, you know, what's the most highest priority? At this time, we're addressing three of the most highest priorities. Um, it, it literally changes from, from, you know, month to month, depending on the severity and all of a sudden something can happen. I could have an air handler that's at the end of its useful life. It's working great. And then, you know, in, in, in the, in the heat of a, of a hot day, it, it, it just dies. That now that's the priority. Um, so things change quick and that's why, you know, these reports, these, you know, building condition surveys, the five-year master plan, they're, they're in a critical, they're a critical map for us.
Great. Thank you, Harvey. Hey, a, another question, uh, has anyone, uh, has anyone else thought that spending money on new sports activity is a poor decision until we're sure we've defeated this COVID situation? Modified sports in the middle school caused many students to be exposed to COVID this year and ended the season early. So, uh, you know, I, I think for, I mean, I'll, I'll answer this as an individual board member and then Nancy, Nina, you can, you can jump on. You know, we're, we're trying to project out to, to next year. Obviously this is the budget that will affect next school year. And the trend lines are such that, I mean, just, you know, it seems every week we're getting more encouraging news as to where we're going. And we're certainly determined as a district to, uh, get back, you know, quote, get back to normal as much as, uh, we possibly can by next year. And so in my view, I mean, I know when I'm trying to evaluate these decisions, I look at this like, uh, you, you, you're trying to, to uh, peg where we're going to be next year. And, and I'm fairly confident that outdoor sports, I mean, if we're, we're doing it now, uh, certainly we want to give these kids as much of an opportunity as possible. I mean, there would just as easily be a contrarian view that, well, haven't these kids gone without their activities for long enough? Uh, don't they deserve to have some sort of reinvestment and, and expansion of their, their opportunities? And I think that that, uh, that view has frankly, uh, a lot, a lot of weight behind it. Uh, Terry is responding, overall, we have not seen a significant number of positive cases in our sports. We've had sports running for months now. Um, yeah. And, and there's, you know, again, and that we, we have, it's our responsibility to try to project out to next year. We're not making funding decisions for what we're going to fund, you know, in a month. This is for, you know, this time next year.
I, I think the biggest change also with the sports, I know, once we were able to, um, to change the infamous quarantine rules. Um, that was, that was a huge plus too. Um, where you didn't have to be within, I'm going to be sarcastic. You didn't have to be within a one mile radius to be quarantined, you know, it was, we were finally able, after much discussion, um, with the county, um, the state came out with some different rules that we were finally able to follow, which benefited everyone. Um, so, and, and in general, I can tell you the last update last night from, from the county, Cornwall has been under ten, the entire town of Cornwall has been um, under, under ten cases a, a day and two nights ago it was four cases. And so the, the trend in general is, is going way down. So we are so hopeful that this will definitely, there will not be any issue next year. That's our hope. Nina, I'm sorry.
No, no, I just wanted to point out the fact that, you know, there are, you know, we're, we're adding some, some funding for certain sports in the budget, but sports in general are in the budget for next year. So in terms of adding things, we're looking at those requests that came in to try and provide for things that have been, you know, put in front of the, the district for a number of years. So it, it, it's not that we're making a decision either anti or pro sports. We're trying to provide that balance to support all of the different programs that we have in the district. Yep. And if, if there is, you know, as there was in this past year, if there's something with COVID, you know, the district will follow all of the, you know, the federal state county rules, um, to do what seemed to be best to protect our kids. And I think to, to Terry's point, you know, we really haven't seen those numbers around sports and, you know, we're trying to balance education, sports and, and mental health, you know, the, the kids getting out and being able to engage in sports have been a, a big positive.
Yep.
And I would add too, and, and I don't, I mean, we're talking hypotheticals here as board members, but if we were taking those votes at the time when sports had not been allowed to come back this spring, I certainly would have had a different view of it, but it's hard for me to look at the outlook today and say, well, outdoor sports have been allowed to come back uh, and make a decision based on next year on the assumption that they won't be, or that they, you know, there'll be, uh, there'll be more problems. So I personally felt like it was, uh, a worthy investment considering where we, uh, we're headed. But thank you for the question. I mean, these are important conversations, obviously. Okay. No more, uh, questions on the chat. This is a sort of a last call. We're, uh, running up on our, our nine o'clock time. If there are no more questions, um, you know, again, just to, for those that haven't received it, there's the, the presentation that I gave earlier is linked at the top of the chat. Our second, uh, second down from the top. Well, I can also post it on our Facebook page following this, just, uh, you know, another, it's not going to be, it's the same information that's kind of floating around in, in different places, but could be good to, uh, to review on your own time. Uh, it has all the essential numbers in there. And I know that, you know, something that we're trying to do as a board, it's not just, I know sometimes the numbers themselves. Uh, it can be hard to see the logic, you know, because there are, there are choices that are, uh, within the numbers. So just trying to lay out some of our, our, our reasoning behind the, the decisions that we made and, and what our long-term view is and, and some of that is, is spelled out as well. Uh, Sean is also adding that this recording will be on YouTube tonight also. Sean doing a little plug for our, our YouTube channel. Um, and Mrs. Health, thank you for your time. This is very insightful and thank you for, uh, your question. Okay. So, yeah.
We're getting ready to, um, to close. I just want to thank everyone, um, the community for participating tonight, for my fellow board members. Um, for Harvey and Terry for being with us. Thank you, Sean, for coordinating all this. Um, and Brendan, I know that you coordinated the, 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 the bulk of this, Sean, for coordinating the technology piece of it. But, um, and Brendan, thank you for your, um, for all your time in putting, putting the presentation together. So, um.
And thank you, Nancy, and thank you, Nina. And, uh, and Terry is saying thank you to us as well. So I think we, we've all covered the, uh, the circular thanking squad.
Thank you.
Thank you, Nina, for finishing it off. Okay. Well, that hits nine o'clock. Uh, I, not to add another thank you, but thank you again to everybody for your time. Uh, and one more, uh, plug, it wouldn't be, uh, a budget season without another reminder, the vote is next Tuesday or this upcoming Tuesday. Uh, the eighteenth, it's at the Cornwall Middle School Gymnasium. Polls open six A.